...of the middle school. And in attendance, we had the president of Monarch, which is leading our construction effort at the middle school, Tom Butler, a number of our construction workers. Just press call for it's on the top of that. And it was a lovely ceremony attended by students, staff, and community members. We had our former dentist, Dr. Wallace, who wrote a lovely poem called "The Grand Lady on Sherman Avenue." One of our students, Lydia Perry, read that. So it was a great ceremony. It was a good kickoff. And so we are under construction. And I just wanted to share with you a couple of things tonight. One is some of the items that we've selected to complete the interior of the middle school. So we have tiles similar to this already on the wall. And this one is not exact to what we already have, but it will replace and look very nice. And some of the wall areas where we have. And the new elevator area on the bottom floor, where we're putting that new elevator in, we were trying to match the tile that we currently have on our floor. So this is as close as we could get. And we think that can certainly accept a nice wax also if we choose to do that. It'll be placed in a basket weave. And our multi-day camp classroom, we're of course taking out some of that cabinetry because it will essentially just fall apart when we reorganize the room and put in the air conditioning. So we've selected the countertop as well as the cabinetry, as well as the flooring for that space. Of course, we've selected the marker board, which believe it or not does come in color, and some cork board that some of the rooms will need new. When it comes to the bathrooms, you know, of course, we're replacing the plumbing, which is behind the wall, many of the fixtures. But we're also getting a new stall area. And so this black will be the material for that. We selected some of the paint for the walls and the trim. That still remains to be seen because of course we want to see what that looks like with the new LED lights in place. Some of our doors, of course, are wooden. We want to keep those. But some of our doors are not wood, so we're going to paint those to somewhat match the wooden ones that we have. And then the one thing I wanted to tell you because we're all excited about our new elevators, this will be the interior of our new elevator. A lot of elevators on the outside you see that are stainless steel. Ours will be dark bronze. So those are just some of the finishes that we've selected so far. This was an important process because we don't want to delay the construction at all. We want to be ready August 17. One thing you don't see on here that we do need to select, and that would be our locker area. So the lockers, we believe we're looking at a navy color, but that has not been finalized. The other thing I wanted to share with you, just some of the details that's taken place at the ground level. And I have with us tonight John Peter. So John's going to give us a brief update with regard to the roof and some testing that we've done. So John, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. The entire west wing has been vacated now. Teachers, students, everything's out. Mostly empty to begin with, but we've gotten everybody out. The crews have started. They've taken out the majority of the light fixtures, the fluorescent lights.
Brandon Adams.
Hey Brandon, it's Ernie. We're going to... The existing drop ceilings or plaster ceilings have started to come down. Lockers have started to come out on the top floor. And they're going to start working their way down the lockers as they go down from top to bottom. There was an issue that came up late last week that what the HVAC company that was working...
A little awkward. I'm going to try and plug in some heads up to see if I can get better of a pen.
Okay. The HVAC company was up on the roof, and they found that the west wing roof was what they call Jib Creek. Jib Creek. And I'm not exactly sure what that is, but they were a little concerned that that was not going to be strong enough to hold the equipment they were going to put up there. I did meet with Ron Hicks about 1:00 this afternoon, and he assured me that what they found was what the structural engineers were aware of when the specs went out. And that the wood framing underneath the Jib Creek would be sufficient to hold the equipment that was going up there. So I was relieved to find that out. Another thing, another sort of curveball that was sent to us late last week was that there is some asbestos testing. Originally, what we were thought the areas were hot for asbestos. They were basically referencing the manual we have or the binder that we had been compiled back in the mid-'80s when the asbestos item first developed. And all the testing was done then. What they've come to find is it works through Phase 1 of the west wing. Part of it, they're finding that some of the areas that they were referencing the binder to find to be hot weren't. So they've taken further samples and found out that no, they weren't hot. So we could be able to save a little money there by not having to do the abatement for certain areas. I think what we've learned from this, though, is as we continue through the other phases, as we get to the east wing phase, we're going to do testing right away as opposed to referencing the binder from the '80s. So I think that will help us. And we're going to start doing a little more testing, or sampling rather, as soon as school lets out for the summer so that we can get people in there and get it tested.
I have a quick question for you. The materials that they're pulling out right now, like the metal lockers, light bulbs, things like that, their company has a method for recycling those items, correct?
The lockers are going in a specific recycle dumpster for Cohen. So that will be sent to Cohen for recycling. We did request that some of the fluorescent tubes and ballasts that they're taking out, that they would set those aside for us so we can use them in other parts of the middle school, the high school, or the elementary buildings so that we wouldn't have to be buying fluorescent tubes or ballasts just to have them taken out again within the next year or two. So we are taking advantage of that.
So if you travel to the middle school, you will notice as soon as you come out of the office to the left area, on every floor, it is boarded off. And then, of course, if you try to move from the high school over to the middle school, you're not able to. The bridge doors are locked, and there's no movement back and forth. So we're grateful that the weather so far is a bit cooperated. Students are walking outside to go to lunch. So construction is well underway, full speed ahead. Okay, on to the next item. I wanted to update you and certainly give you all the information necessary regarding the class of 2018. You know, we're just days away from graduation, and I have very much so enjoyed having lunch with each and every one of them. Every Wednesday in the month of April, we were able to set aside time for that. So that was a real joy. And I was able to collect their email addresses so that I can continue to keep in touch with them as they move on to their next greatness. So we're excited about all the good things that we're going to do, but we want to tell you about all the good things they've done so far. And so for you to really understand who this class is and how hard they've worked, and some of them are still working hard. We have our high school principal here, Mr. Winarad, who's going to share certainly about some of the great things that they've achieved. And then some of the students, of course, that were still working to make sure that they're able to walk in graduation. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Winarad.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. This has been a really great class all four years. I have no complaints with these kids. They have just been outstanding. And they have done everything that we've asked of them. We are happy to see them go, yet sad as well. So what I wanted to talk to you about today are some logistical pieces about graduation in the class of 2018. So I'm going to give you kind of the heavy news first, and then I'm going to go to the great things that they're doing so we can end on a positive note. There are approximately 175 students in this graduating class, which is up from the last couple of years, which is great. That's what we want. Currently, as of today, we have 31 students in danger of not graduating. Now, with that being said, and I'll go to this next, most of those 31 are working on an alternative pathway to graduation that the state provided. As you know, students have to get 18 and, of course, exam points. And that seems to be the biggest stumbling block for our kids who are not graduating. And not only do they have to get 18, they have to be certain numbers in certain areas. So to give you an example, we had a student who had 23 points, but only had 3 points in math. You need 4 points. So it creates all these little different nuances that we have to understand to make sure that kids can graduate. So we, some of the kids did a capstone project today. It looks like we picked up six graduates starting at 12:15 this afternoon, which I was really happy about. And then we still have students working on stuff until May the 11th that can turn in things. And probably I would take it up to 1 hour before graduation if it really got down to that because we want to see our kids graduate. We do have six students deferring this year. And deferring students are students on IEPs who, when they graduate, do not take their diploma but go on to some type of other training somewhere else. This is a rather low number for us this year. Usually, we have a lot more. Unfortunately, the state of Ohio does not count them as graduates. They are considered non-graduates because they don't take their diploma, which is an absolute shame because they've met the requirements that we asked them to meet. So that always is a number that we have to worry about in our graduation rate. However, and our conversation is we're going to do right by kids. If they need to defer their diploma and get further learning, then they're going to do it. Whether we have one or we have 20, we will always tell those kids that they have an option to do something else other than take their diploma. The other part that Mrs. Chess and I have been working on is our online learners. We are finding that what we're using in our online learning is not preparing our kids to pass the EOC. When we first started what we call the Success Academy, we were doing the OGT, and we were graduating kids out of there every single year who would not usually graduate. It's been a little different the last two years. The kids are earning their credits, but they're not passing with their points. So Mrs. Chess and I are working on some pieces to remedy that that we hope to have in place next year. But we will keep working with those kids. And all those kids who don't graduate can always come back in the summer and work on things and be part of the summer cohort, which actually goes into the 2018 cohort. So we could pick up a few kids this summer as well. So I gave you two handouts. The first one is this Ohio Pathways. And it explains if you don't get the 18 points, how you can graduate from high school. And we have kids doing various pieces of these. The column on the left where the bullet points are are the things that you could do. And you have to do two of those in order to graduate. And so we have kids doing attendance. We have doing the GPA. We did the capstone. Our kids at Scarlet Oaks are doing the Work Keys credentials. This has proven challenging to some of our kids because often they're not prepared to put in the work. The capstone, all the kids went, wow, I've never worked so hard in a long time. And they were great presentations. But it's not as it was probably when most of us graduated. When we went, we did our classes and we graduated. The game has really changed in how students can earn a diploma. And so we are always trying to educate our students. And I would also like to tell you that any student who didn't have the 18 points when their senior year started, we met with every student, contacted every parent, presented this to them. They have known since probably September 10 these alternative pathways. We divided that number by, there were four of us, and we've continued to check in with those kids all through the school year. Some have taken advantage of it, some have not. Are there any questions about that part? So the next part is the fun part. You have a sheet that looks like this. This was compiled by Jamie Kemp and Gear Up, and this was for our signing day. And as you can see, we have a lot of students going to a lot of different places in a variety of different things. We have students going to the service. We have students who are going on to Scarlet Oaks for deferred. And our big group of kids, UC Blue Ash, they've been a great partner with us. They do a lot to encourage our kids to come there. They waive the fees. They have them for lunch. And they help them with their first step into their college education. And that, again, is our biggest group. And a lot of those kids will go two years to UC Blue Ash and then on to the main campus. But that campus has really been good for our kids. Even the ones who are currently there, as we meet with them and talk to them, the transition is nice. It's small, like Morro High School. They don't feel overwhelmed. There's places to park when you pull up. So we are very, we covet that relationship with UC Blue Ash. But we have kids going all over the place. Eastern Kentucky, Ohio University, Kent State. And the money that they received from the honors assembly a couple of weeks ago as well, I think it was upward of $220,000. Am I right, Dr. Sabo? I'm trying to recall that. And it's just amazing. There's a student on here, the one who's going to Kent State, received enough money from our scholarship foundation where she literally is paying about $500 her first year. And that's a student who really needed that money. And the excitement with her mom and her, to see them be able to know that she's going to take her next step in college is absolutely, it's the most awesome thing that we have going with our kids. And then our kids going into the service, they're excited as well. Most of them are shipping out around July. And so we look to hear from them as well as they return home and from boot camp and things like that. So this is kind of a picture of our kids. A lot of kids doing a lot of different things. And we're very proud of them. Gear Up has also worked very hard with us to make sure that they've taken the ACT, that they've had college visits. And as we went through the years with Gear Up, we tweaked things, taking kids out of school with the days we have early release so they don't miss a lot of school. They go on trips on Saturdays. And these costs, these trips cost nothing for our kids. Come on, get on the bus. You get fed, you get driven, you get a tour. Often, you get a T-shirt and other things. And it is just a wonderful opportunity. And I would bet probably about 70% of the kids on this list at one point in time took a Gear Up trip to see a college. With that being said, graduation is just around the corner. For those of you who are new, we will meet at the Centos Center at about 6:45. And if you're looking at the Centos Center, we go into the door on the left and up the stairs. Just follow all the kids. We'll walk out together. They'll be seating up on the stage for you. And we'll go through the ceremony, as we always do, handing out our diplomas and congratulating our kids as they finish one step of their life and starting the next one. Yes?
I have a question for you. Do you have an interpreter scheduled for graduation?
I do not think we do.
I know that I have a spot on stage, but I'd be more than willing to volunteer my services to interpret graduation.
Okay.
Because I would love to serve the families in this community if they want to come, if they have deaf family members, just to make sure that that service is provided and that would save the district a cost.
If you would like to do it, I'll have a seat for you, and you can stand and sit as you're ready.
Xavier, if you let them know, they actually have a platform. They go right in front of the stage for us. I've done several graduations there.
I will let them know.
They just, they pick a side of the stage, whichever one you like, and then just tell them you need the interpreter platform.
Great. I will take care of that. The band and orchestra combined will be performing as they usually do. And the silhouettes will be singing the National Anthem as they have the last couple of years as well. There are no tickets needed. All families can bring as many people as they want. We have plenty of room. And that is another great piece of going to the Centos that, you know, some schools, you get 2 tickets, 3 tickets. You can bring whoever you want. Everybody's welcome. So we look forward to that night as well.
Mr. Winarad just recently invited all of the staff to attend. And he has a special reserved section for them to sit together as a group, which will make it even more special.
And our format will be the same as it has been. Our president will give a speech, myself, Dr. Sabo, and our valedictorian, salutatorian.
If you have copies of any of the speeches in advance, if you can send them to me so that I can make sure to rehearse those?
We will have those.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'm speaking for myself and the kids. I don't know about you two.
It's in process. Whatever you give them, just forward them over so that way I can make sure.
Are there any other questions about our graduating class or things that are about to happen? They'll start exams Friday. And they'll have four days of exams. They'll have the senior picnic. And then they will really be finished until graduation day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Winarad. The next item on our agenda will be the Education Committee. Dr. Sabo, you want to go over the items that will be presented in our meeting?
Sure. You see, of course, our graduates, our list of graduates, which is an obligation for us to approve those students. And we recognize that some of them may still be working on their obligations. We're hoping that they are able to achieve that. The next thing you see are field trips. Need to catch me here. And of course, you'll see a service contract. That's all our work with Huntington County Educational Service Center and how they'll support us next year. You also see an adoption of our K-3 Language Arts program. The program is through McGraw-Hill, and it's called Wonders Board. You see additional adoption of grades 4 through 5. And you see an additional adoption of elementary... Oh, have I skipped ahead?
No.
Okay.
Dr. Sabo, you did skip 4.03, the Ohio High School Athletic Association membership.
Oh, I did not want to miss that. So that's our work, of course, with the High School Athletic Association. It's our membership that will take us into next school year. And so after that is our Huntington County Educational Service Center agreement, followed by our new textbook adoption, which generally is workbooks as well as an online component. And that's grades K through 3 and then grades 4 and 5.
And maybe could I add one thing to that?
Sure.
So just so you're aware, we did have a pilot team that worked with different vendors over like 2 years ago. And then we decided, we decided to consider piloting. We piloted from McGraw-Hill Works. And we've done that this last school year for a group of teachers, all from grades K to 5. And we've met a couple of times during the year and also talked in different ways. And this is the one adoption that they felt best about as a resource. In gone are the days where you submit full week to all things about an adoption, but you look for one that can represent and help support the needs that you have at that time in your district. And we felt like the little readers were good for this adoption. We liked some of the choices for this year. And this one, we felt best fit our needs at this moment in time. So you'll see the K to 3 is their core program called Wonders 4. And 4, grades 4 and 5 is just a little twist on that. It's just kind of a different approach with the balance approach. But we do feel good about this adoption. It is, the online component will last for 6 years for this adoption so that things that we'll be purchasing after this date will be consumable materials that the kids throughout the year, use throughout the year.
It's been some time since we've done an adoption. And so it's welcomed.
It is.
The last two things you see there, this month, we wanted to approve our handbooks for next school year. So you see a preschool handbook as well as the elementary K through 6 handbook. And the elementary K through 6 handbook represents all three of our elementaries. They work under the same handbook. And next month, I hope to bring to you grade 7 through 12 handbook. Are these handbooks sent home like we do in the high school level to the parents of...
They are, they are. They're also posted online. And we worked really hard to make them in Spanish as well as in English.
The next item is personnel.
Okay, so you'll find that we have a number of items. Number 1 is an addendum to a contract. An approval of an administrative contract. Number 2, our food service director. A resignation of Yul Jameson. As you know, she served in kindergarten this year. And you'll see her a little bit later, a few pages over. She wants to go back to her library aide position. So she's excited about that. You see some teacher contracts, and that's just noting that these are folks that will now be on a continuing contract, which means they have served for, this will serve for 3 years. And then you see personnel that they're on their third 1-year contract. So that notes that where they will be in the continuum for next school year. And then you notice personnel that will be on their second 1-year contract. And then, of course, personnel that we're bringing onboard that for next school year will be on their first 1-year contract. Of course, you see Yul Jameson there is going back over to the library aide. And there are a number of coaches that we're working on for next year. But before we bring those to you, we want to make sure that they have all of their testing and credentials in place before we ask you to approve them.
At this point, are we fully staffed or are we still looking for a teaching positions?
As of this point, we are looking for a science physician at the middle school. And we are in the process of reviewing resumes. So at that point, we are, we are ready to go.
Has someone stepped up to replace Jameson for the teaching position? Is she switching over to library?
So she supported Ms. Tanner during her treatment this school year. So we anticipate Ms. Tanner will be with us without any challenges next school year. And complete full help.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
All right, the next item is Policy Committee. Want me to go ahead and have Brandon do that?
If he can hear us.
Brandon, can you hear us? Oh.
Sorry about that.
Okay, we're on the, we're starting on the policies. You want to go ahead and lead that discussion?
Sure. Sorry, I heard absolutely nothing from the previous discussions. So, yeah, we can go ahead and start off with the policy discussion. So there are a number of items that we're going to be doing first reading on this one. Most of the policies on there just relate to either removing, removing a regulation that's no longer valid, like the Fair Credit Reform Act, or adding a minor revised title. That's going to take care of like 90% of those policies. The ones that you really pay special attention to is that everybody should take a moment pay special attention to, that everybody should take a moment to read over individually. It's going to be the ones regarding being college credit plus to that. And if you go into those policies and you read it, there's a lot of extraportage that's taking out any policies. And what that is directly related to is we're adding 11TE to the college credit plus, is related to students who normally were underperforming. So the last thing that we want to do is we'll have the students either withdraw or drop out or get a valid grade in the competition class that could have lasting effects. So most of the changes that is just so that we can guide them correctly.
Professor, are you familiar with the changes? Do you want to know more details about them? Is there a way to link those documents for us?
They're all under our policies. We're online.
Oh, I was thinking that we -- for the changes that are coming. They're in with current listing.
So the biggest changes for CCP are that there's only going to be certain courses that they consider eligible for students. Sometimes kids might say, oh, I want that year three art studio course. We're not really supposed to have that in year one. They're supposed to bill to that. So they're going to have like a list of what they consider eligible for first-year students in CCP, and then once you've taken that course, then, of course, you move on, just like you typically would do in college. Right, exactly. If students are underperforming, you have to have a certain cumulative grade point average of a 2.0. You can't withdraw for two or more courses during one semester, or you have failing courses during that term without the next term going out of probation. So what they would do is reduce the number of courses you can take. So say you took four courses and had less than a 2.0, you would go on probation, and they would recommend that you only try one course that next term. It's really to help support the student making choices when they've tried to tackle the world at once, perhaps. So it's -- and it's a way that the superintendent, if you go through this and you're still unsuccessful with this program, eventually the superintendent's going to say, this isn't right for you right now, say with our high school program, and wait a little bit longer. So it's just a way, as Brandon said, to add a little teeth to the current policies in CCP, which have not -- have been a little loose and allowed too much choice for some students. So this tightens it a bit.
Did you get all that?
He knows it. We met.
And to answer your question, they should be loaded so that you should be able to see the strike through and the change. I'm not sure if you're able to do it. I didn't know that was our intention to show that.
Yes, not on me.
So we'll make sure that it kind of loads up tomorrow.
Because I know I'm having trouble with that right now myself.
Yeah, it's not linked on this particular one.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any more questions?
Do you want to go back over personnel?
Sure. Brandon, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, great. So Tim just asked me to go back over personnel. Are you able to access the agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to say, why don't we just -- do you have any questions over anything on the agenda that we've already talked about that you want to burn out?
No, I think I'm okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right. And then we can go ahead and move on. Building and grounds committee. Do you want to take that, or do we want -- I appreciate you to take that. Okay. I'm chuggling because I'm forcing myself to not use my paper and use my new system. So the Norwood Fireworks, of course, for many years has used Shea Stadium, and so they are requesting to use that again on July the 4th from 6:00 to 11:00. And of course, the Valley Church, this is a new request, but they're requesting to use our Shea Stadium and to not land a helicopter, but to allow one to hover and drop eggs on April the 20th from 9:00 to 2:00. So they plan on using the concourse area, and I believe they're working with the city to get permissions for perhaps that helicopter to land on the baseball field or something, but we've made very clear they cannot land on the astroturf. So the third request is for the high school gym on May the 5th for a wheelchair basketball tournament, and that's sponsored through our Avenue for Success program. Of course, Avenue for Success also wants to use the cafeteria and restrooms and the practice field this weekend for the Glow for the Cure. That will be combined with their year-end celebration also. And then Avenue for Success also wants to use Shea Stadium, just the shaded area, which we call the concourse area right outside the concession stand, this summer for their summer camp activities. And I believe that concludes the request for facility usage.
Was the date for May 5th, I guess preemptive, we already approved that event, or is that date incorrect?
The May 5th for the wheelchair?
That already happened?
I think it did.
Oh, okay.
We just asked for clarity for all of us, for Avenue for Success. Even though it's our programming, she often needs to use facilities all over the district, and it's just best that we all know and that we all approve of the use. So we've asked her to do that, and she does such a great job.
And I know this has been quite far before, but I kind of forget. I'm still a little new. The Level A, Level C, there's certain levels that are considered free usage, some are partial cost, some are cost switch.
That's right.
What are those levels?
And you're catching me now not remembering because I don't have that paper in front of me. Hang on, let me look here and see if I can tell you that.
I think the Level C is the only one that has a charge on this one. It's a non-profit.
Okay. So Level A is stuff that we have programs, ours, free usage, C is folks are paying to use that space.
Yeah. Does Level C pay for the cost of us having to clean up the facility or any security?
I'll look into detail, and I apologize for not having that level walking around. There's a base cost to that that's directed more, I believe, maybe Kristina can help you remember, at like a nonprofit level versus a commercial level.
Is that the difference? Because it's not the shirley.
I'll have to check.
Okay. I still don't --
But we're not charging. Avenue for Success is not charged for using a facility.
Right, okay.
I do have a question on the Easter egg drop. Are these real eggs or plastic eggs?
That's a great question, and I kept thinking, even if they are plastic, they need to be taped, otherwise whatever's in them is going to roll out.
Real eggs are going to go bad on the field. That's what we're going to do.
I don't think anyone uses real eggs anymore.
I was just wondering.
They're turkeys.
They're turkeys. I thought they could fly.
Since Easter egg drop not to land on the field, where are they going to land?
The helicopter's going to land on the baseball field.
Oh, the helicopters.
The eggs are going to land on the field.
I was just saying, where are the eggs going?
Would they be able to land down where the track extends back?
No.
Because that's a nice square.
No, no. It's near where the baseball field for the helicopter.
Far enough away?
Yeah, and it's generally very wet over there, so.
Yeah, that's a good way to go, the track area or something.
If the grounds are wet, are we able to coordinate a section of that lower parking lot for the helicopter? If the grounds are way too wet?
That would be a big city.
That would be the city.
Yeah.
Just thinking.
There are a lot of wires in that area. And then just the, you know, zonville, you know, being removed, that entire building there too, that they're going to land in the street. Okay. Any more questions? Right, on to the Finance Committee. Mr. Faulkner, would you like to take that? Or do you delegate?
Are you still with us, Brandon?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, all right.
Do you want to test the vote? Do we hear better, or who are we delegating to?
Okay, so the first item that we have, I covered in detail in a presentation last month, which is the five-year forecast, and very little change to that since I presented it to you then. We did meet an administrative team, had a couple of items that we needed to include. One was textbooks, for example, which we've now incorporated in there, which you talked about earlier tonight. The next item, financial, I should mention, by the way, in the forecasting that we did cover in detail, that the only levy that we have modeled is a renewal levy that must be voted on by 2021. So there's some time lag there, although you can request that renewal earlier if you so choose. The financial reports are the standard reports for the month, and then on the next item, there's a couple of additional items this month. We have a county auditor estimated resource spreadsheet that we update periodically throughout the year, and so we are updating that. And basically, if you look at that, you'll see that is a level of estimated resources and then how much is appropriated, and then there's a test in the county auditor spreadsheet that is it okay? Are there resources to cover the appropriations? And in our case, that is true. And then finally, is the resolution to accept tax rates. These are the 2018 tax rate for 2019 tax collections, and so we've looked at those. Those will also be adjusted if there's any need by year-end based upon evaluation changes. So those are the four items in finance. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
It's written there. My top two. Here's the end of the agenda. Any other questions? All right, can I have a motion for?
Actually, you can just adjourn us.
Just adjourn us and go into the next one?
Stay at the time.
Okay. Do you want to adjourn at 6:14?